I'd like to ask everyone to stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law of liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to the public participation, beginning with Dr. Dearman and his superintendent's report.
First item. We have had five new FOIA requests since the February meeting. One of those requests have been filled. The other four requests are from the same person, are in the process of being handled by Mr. McKenzie. Dunlap Shine Award winners. I want to congratulate the Dunlap Shine Award winners for the month of February. Julie LaMaster is a sixth grade science teacher at Dunlap Valley Middle School, and Courtney Conley, a kindergarten teacher at Banner Elementary School. Both schools received their, excuse me, both teachers received their crystal apples and got to hear the great things their nominating colleagues had to say about them. We look forward to recognizing the staff for the month of March next week. And I think you've got a picture.
Trying it then? The one didn't, didn't take.
Didn't work?
No.
Well, we can come back to that. I also like to recognize some members of our staff that sometimes don't get the recognition they deserve, but they do an outstanding job for that, for our district and for our students. That being our food service staff, and we have several of them here tonight. Their director is Lisa Leitner. If you don't know Lisa, that's Lisa. And the reason they're here tonight is because of the Food Safety Excellence Award. I would like to recognize our Director of Food Service, Lisa Leitner, and her staff that's here tonight. On February 27th, the Peoria County Board of Health recognized the 2022 Food Safety Excellent Award winners. I'm proud to say that each one of our buildings received this award. The award takes into account not only food inspections, but also dedication to food safety through the ongoing development of voluntary food safety practices. Thank you for your dedication and hard work, and congratulations on this achievement. Lisa, would you stand up and please introduce your staff?
Hello. I have head cook at Dunlap High School, Russell Bryant. Diana Frye, Dunlap Middle School. Kim Lible, Ridgefield Elementary. Gabby Delet, Banner Elementary. Karen Vander, Waldorf Way. And Demi Singer, Dunlap Valley Middle.
To put this into context, there were thirteen award winners throughout the county, and eight of them were Dunlap school captains. Thank you. I also like to say thank you to the twenty-five elementary teachers who've been piloting the ELA materials this school year with the goal of providing common, research-proven, high-quality instructional materials for all of our first through fifth grade classrooms. Tonight, the curriculum department will be presenting a proposal that would not be possible without the incredible amount of work each pilot teacher has put forth since, before the current school year began. I know we request several surveys to be completed each year, so I'd like to thank the teachers, students, and parents of piloting classrooms for taking the time to complete the feedback surveys twice this year so that the proposal we will hear about tonight could be made. So, thank you. Monday's SIP. Monday this week, certified staff came together at Dunlap High School for a day of professional learning themed around supporting the whole student. The day kicked off with the keynote speaker, Jessica Donaldson, who spoke on the neurosequential model, which focuses on helping of support students by first understanding brain functioning. Teachers then had over forty-five session topics that were presented by district staff, as well as some out of district presenters over four different breakout sessions. Thank you to those teachers who took the time to prepare for their presentations and share their expertise with their colleagues. I'll just make a, I finished up a session myself on Monday. It was actually Jason Shea's session. I stepped out, and there was a group of teachers that were talking off to the side, and they didn't know that I was listening, but I could hear their conversation. I was eavesdropping. But the comment that was made by one of the teachers was, "This was great. I hope, I wish we could do this more often." And that is like the ultimate praise for professional development. So, thank you to Mr. Andrews, his staff for the work, and I know many others that contributed to putting that together Monday. It went really well. So, thank you. And last one, strategic planning meeting. Our first one was held February 22nd. We have a core stakeholder team comprised of many different people that I've addressed before up here, but we have started that process. The first meeting was primarily around reviewing what we had in place already, and then looking at developing new mission and vision statements. And then we have another meeting, I believe, next Wednesday, which will be our second meeting of a four-meeting process, and we should be done by May. That is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman. We will now move on to the public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I think we're good to go. This concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to the information and discussion items. The school activity account reports are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the Perfect Agreement is available in the packet. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I just wonder how many, how many participate in that? Students?
It just depends on your year, because they have to apply.
Five, twenty? How many schools are there?
Students.
Well, I mean, that's because it goes to different classes. Really, like in super science, there are probably sixty kids in that class at every time. So, there's a lot of different courses that go, all the art class gets very much money. So, all the art students get all that.
Okay. I mean, the ones that go off-site.
Word-based stuff, or word-based, I don't know, maybe ten to fifteen, depending upon.
We have more students who are applying for that for next year than we ever have. And we're around, we're almost at twenty. Now, not all of them will likely give in, but that's the most we've ever had, from what I've heard.
It's our best option. Really, they get a lot of money to fill other CT classes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Information regarding the eighth grade trip to Washington, DC, is included in the packet. Are there any questions? Okay, information regarding the DHS Entrepreneurship Textbook Proposal is included in the board packet. Are there any questions?
I'm just a quick being to know, ironically, we have the ability to fund that textbook purchase through Perfect Funds. So, if that's something that came to my attention, just.
Thank you. The next item, information regarding the proposed DHS Computer Lab upgrades is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Okay, next, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Cuzek will present information regarding the elementary ELA curriculum resources.
So, tonight's presentation is really a culmination after really about almost two years' worth of just really seeking to understand lots of information. At the outset, what ELA instruction was envisioned to look like by our teachers here within the district, what best practices were, what's current research was showing us, were evidence-proven ways to make sure that we are procuring students reading at grade level, as well as then the selection process and vetting of where we got our, our, the selection of wit and wisdom to pilot this current school year. And then throughout that, just feedback continuously with piloting teachers, stakeholder feedback, understanding that, as well as what would be needed in order to meaning, manageably move forward with a common ELA resource for our first and fifth grade classrooms. So, the purpose here tonight is to quickly, as quick as possible, review our elementary ELA resource selection and pilot process, shared data from the pilot, and propose the Phase Three of this, or Case Plan, the transition to implementation plan, because, again, course correction here. So, this graphic you've seen before, but just as a reminder, within a curriculum, a district's curriculum department for overseeing and management of curriculum, there are different review cycles and processes that you can go through. So, we had talked about how last year, we had had just got to the completion of Step Two, which would be making sure that we've identified our priority standards, worked on common assessments, and now we're looking to review potential resources to use within our classrooms, and then look to field test, which is piloting this year, and looking to, of course, continuously evaluate how that is going. So, really, we're kind of between Step Two B and Three of how I look at how we review curriculum within the district. So, again, why now? The last ELA adoption for a common resource for all elementary teachers was back in 2008, 2009, and then you had the adoption of the new Illinois Learning Standards, now just called the Illinois Learning Standards for ELA and math, in other subjects sense. New research is, of course, available to inform our ELA instruction practices. You need to be cognizant of that, make sure that you are being on the cutting edge of how we are delivering instruction to students. All grade levels had completed, again, that GVC work at the end of that school year, so in terms of the reprocess, it gets us where we need to be for this consideration, having a deep understanding of our learning standards, what students need to know and be able to do. And then also, the SRA grants funds provide the opportunity within a specified timeframe. I'll get a little bit more into that later in the presentation. And that was, the use of this for high-quality materials was one of the top feedback choices that we'd received from the SRA three stakeholder feedback survey that also was required to do in order to use the funds. So, this image, again, is another one that you had seen, just with some different frames around it to kind of give life to like what this means. So, overall, this is what's called Scarborough's rope that was created by Dr. Hollis Scarborough back in the nineties to explain to the parents and the teachers, what are the skills that are necessary in order to procure a child who's able to read proficiently. So, you have at the top, your language comprehension in all capital letters, large capital letters, and then word recognition. And then, kind of starting at the bottom, under word recognition, you'll see to, for phonemic awareness, we currently have in place at the kindergarten to second grade level, what are called pegging resources to address those skills within the classroom. Those are shorter units that are done within the ELA block. And then for phonics, so decoding being, and understanding word, or I'm sorry, sound letter correspondence and up, you have our foundations materials in place. Part of last year's proposal had included making sure that we have the foundation materials in our K through two classrooms, and really adding second grade. We had it in place at K one and in places of the second grade, but again, wanting to make sure that we have this baseline in place. Then, after looking for, you know, a common ELA resource to address the language comprehensions, where we found wit and wisdom and have the pattern of this past year to address all of those associated skills. And then you see sideways in an era that's going, going between foundations and wit and wisdom are the GOs. So, GOs are decodable texts that are associated with wit and wisdom. So, the kids are getting their phonics instruction, and then they are able to practice ingredients that associate with those skills that they had just been learning about. So, it reinforces the phonics lesson while building the language comprehension and background knowledge. And then framing all of that is our continued professional development that we would need to continue to offer teachers in our understanding, our growing understanding of the science of reading and structured literacy, as well as the letters training, which we had started this year with teachers, and want to continue that moving forward, as we had a tremendous interest in that last year, but just weren't able to do, to do everyone's at that time request. Again, all that is in efforts to make sure that we are by measure of our priority standards making, helping students to read at a grade level, become skilled readers. Next, we're going to reflect on the pilot data and reflections. But again, just to echo what Dr. Dearman had said, and to give name to the twenty-five teachers we've piloted this year, again, just want to thank them for their efforts, countless emails, and am very appreciative of their open and honest feedback, because we do not, we're, we're proud of that. It's been extra time that they wouldn't have had to have done had they just continued with resources they used previously. So, again, we are very appreciative of their efforts. Cannot say that other. Leanne's going to talk next about our feedback.
Absolutely. So, the feedback that you'll see on the next few slides are from our most recent formal evaluation. We sent families, we sent teachers, and we sent students a Google form to gather feedback about the materials. But we want to note that feedback has been a continuous loop throughout the entire year. So, starting even in September, we, each pilot teacher had a half-day where they would come as a grade level, so a small group of between three and seven teachers at a time. And we would listen to their feedback during that time. We would connect them with resources, with the company, coach on different things. So, that occurred in September and in November as well. And then we were able to give a more formal, comprehensive survey to pilot teachers in December, much longer, to really get a comprehensive idea of everything that was happening. The curriculum team ourselves have been in classrooms over fifty times during lessons that were taking place of wit and wisdom. Based on the data from December, we then decided to have January half-day meetings as well to address any of the areas that came up with a lower score. We really wanted to ask the question, does this low score, is this such a problem that it needs to throw everything out, or is there a manageable solution that we can handle moving forward? And all of that, at the same time, continuing to strengthen relationships with our, with our teachers so that they are free to reach out to us. We have email, lots of emails, meeting with teachers during PLCs, during their prep times, as well as purposefully planned events on our school improvement days and our institute days. So, you'll see numbers here from our latest, but please know this really is like a whole year's worth of work on curriculum team and the pilot teachers and parents and students too, of course. So, here for the March family feedback, we had presented our preliminary plan to our teachers in February because of meeting the deadlines in order to need to, in order to order the materials to finish out this school year. The way that the deadlines matched up, but at the same time, we still wanted to collect family feedback. If there was any showstoppers within family feedback, we would absolutely take that into consideration prior to our proposal this evening. And we're always looking for that feedback to help us with next steps as well. So, as you can see here, overall, the interest, common themes that we'd hear for the fable would be their students really showing an interest in the topics that they're reading about, improved comprehension, choosing to read independently more, and more detailed writing. There was a definite need, as shown in this survey here, for increased parent communication. So, Wit and Wisdom kind of has like a standard, you know, parent newsletter that you can go home with every module. We'd really like to beef that up moving forward. We want to see all fours. We want to know that our, we want our parents to know that they are a good understanding of everything that's involved with the modules. So, that's one area that that feedback is super helpful for our next steps. The next slide, we get to see some of our youngest learners. So, we have one hundred and forty-eight students in first and second grade that answered that question there, how, use drawings and words to tell you how you feel about reading and writing in school. And overall, again, we see mostly favorable. Of note, the students are really enjoying the text. They like working with the Parkers or small groups, learning about the topics, and some of them noted specific lessons where they maybe had some hands-on materials that they used. In the unfavorable, that did give us a little clue to the next step here too. Several of them noted that they, they wanted more movement. They were listening too long, you know, and they were listening too long to the stories and things like that. So, that gives us an idea of how to help teachers with the next step and incorporate movement into lessons and things like that. But again, we see overall favorable or neutral there. And then we had three hundred and forty-seven total students piloted. This was across seventeen classrooms in third through fifth grade. Again, mostly favorable. Patterns to notice here, again, students enjoying learning about the topics. It was noted several times that students liked having more time to learn about a topic rather than skipping around a lot. Unfavorable, at the same time, sometimes it's too long on one topic, which you'll start to see a trend here, that we need to work on pacing as we move into next year. Some of them commented that it makes you think too much, or that it's hard, but that they still really felt that they were learning a lot. So, a little trend within the student feedback. And then the next slide does give the evidence between December and March as far as the pilot teacher feedback. Please note, we have two teachers who were present during December but are on leave now. That's why we don't have their pilot data. And the star that's in there indicates, we had one teacher who indicated she's very much liking it so far. She was on leave towards the beginning of the year, and she just felt like she needed more time to really give it up for a yes. So, that was why that star was there. The largest celebration that we hear from teachers is the level of which the lessons improve their teaching and the quality of what their students can do. That they're seeing their students do things that they never thought that they could even see first, second graders do before, that it's really raising that quality there. Seeing discussions in depth from all readers, improved structure of writing and vocabulary. The feedback also points us to the next step of aligning assessments that are involved with Wit and Wisdom, with previously created assessments that we had here in Dunlap. Pacing, of course, both of lessons and of helping teachers to prepare materials to cut down on prep time for lessons, and supporting all students with various needs.
All right.
So, some of these things we kind of already, kind of already touched on here, but overall, we see the merit based on the feedback from all of our stakeholders. We're reporting areas of growth across all those areas of English Language Arts. And this, these materials truly are requiring a change of existing ELA practices, which requires focused professional development. It's not just open the box and go teach it. There's a lot that needs to be learned when it comes to both the materials and structured literacy in general. Expanded parent communication, like we already touched on, and then that dedicated time to support specific guidance for pacing and support for our ESL and special education students.
All right. So, the next area is talking about our elementary core, the core text within the Wit and Wisdom series. So, when we initially started, again, talking about our vision for what ELA instruction looks like in the district, having high-quality published trade books were at the top of the teacher's priority list. So, that was one of the draws of Wit and Wisdom. Also, it's aligned with structured literacy and the science of reading. And within that, our initial view, a review of it definitely pointed out, you know, all text within publishers' age recommendations, utilizing consulting districts. And then, again, as we were working through the pilots, to make sure that we are truly giving this our good and honest review, consulting with district counselors, psychologists, and librarians, discussing what does age appropriateness look like in terms of developmental, developmentally appropriate guidelines when it comes to a text. So, with that though, also, we are very cognizant of the fact that there are some districts that have had some issues involving with text within the Wit and Wisdom series, both in other districts across the country and then locally as well. So, in response to that, that was one of the big concerns on my end, as well as teachers. And thankfully, Great Minds had released this past February their complete list of replacement text modules. And so, taking a look at what other districts have done with that, while some of them have, had only changed one within their programming, we are looking to change ten different texts within it. So, if it's available through Great Minds, we're going to take the ultimate text modules. Because, again, we are trying to be cognizant of that and make sure that all are comfortable with, with the materials. The, which we'll get into here a little bit. Additionally, pilot teachers, students, and families explicitly being asked to share feedback on the text content will be a continuous process throughout next year as well, as we continue to, again, work on that communication with families. And then, finally, we will work to develop a tool that puts a core text guide that will not only say what the texts are that are being read, but then how they can help support their kids at home. I'm not going to go over each of these slides, but just on the next four slides, you will see for each of the four modules, as each grade level has four different learning modules, you have your major, your major text selection just to be led throughout that module. So, obviously, it's broken down in each column by grade level. The next row is then the topical theme of that module, and then, and then the major text to be focused on within the module. That's the first, the second, third, and the fourth. You will note that on the fifth grade and on some of those in the first, third, and fourth modules, those are listed as TDD. Wit and Wisdom does not have alternative text modules available, so we will be working to get around using the framework and selecting text that are needs within our district. Phase Three.
So, this slide just very explicitly and clearly lays out our vision for the implementation plan, starting with the completion of this year's modules. Starting next year, we will be proposing that we continue the implementation of Wit and Wisdom in the classrooms that are currently piloting this year. So, this year, those classrooms have been using materials with a focus on evaluating the materials. And now, we want to shift that focus more towards mastering the materials and really figuring out the nuances of how to take this material and make it work for all of your students. Secondly, there, we see that we are proposing that first and second grade classrooms add the implementations of those GOs. So, that's the component that are the smaller decodable texts for your younger learners who are connecting phonics skills to comprehension. It bridges both of those. We are looking to have differentiated professional development through those Institute Days, PLCs, SIP Days, that is curriculum-aligned. So, it's aligning what teachers would actually be doing, getting teachers in each other's classrooms to observe in the classrooms that are implementing. And then we want to continue that letters training. It's essential that teachers understand the why behind the program, and that's exactly what's happening through the letters training. So, today, we are recommending, we are asking for the funding for each of these different components, even though the Wit and Wisdom parts wouldn't be used until school year twenty, twenty-five with students. But we want to be able to get them in teachers' hands next year so they can use them as they're participating in PD, so they can have everything organized and ready to go as, once they leave for the summer next school year. And on the next slide, you can click on that to get a more comprehensive, detailed view of the plan. And Matt will break down all the associated costs with the programs.
So, here is just, in this table, a comparison of the costs that they were proposed back in March of 2022 to updated costs in 2023. And there are a couple of contributing factors as to why those costs are different. The first and foremost, one of the things we noticed right away is particularly at the primary grades with the student additions of the books, is that they weren't, again, developmentally appropriate. They don't necessarily align, and then if students are being asked to respond to things and don't have enough space. So, teachers are digitizing those as we kind of assume what happened, being we are one-to-one, and making it their own. So, we would be looking to only have a first initial year, so teachers have a basis to get started with that. The, the second contributing factor as to why that cost had decreased is initially, we had asked for two literacy coaches over the course of two years. We've decreased that to one, because through conversations with piloting teachers, just the recognition and understanding that the majority of the work in terms of pacing recommendations given to all teachers, the accommodations for special student populations, those things, those extra materials that we would make regardless of what service we want to make it our own, they would be doing. So, using that, using an implementation committee to work in a coordinated manner to make sure that those things are in place and ready for all teachers to use during full implementation. And then, the, the bottom is talking about a future expense during Phase Four, which I'll get to here in a couple of slides. To break down, this is just summarizing and showing what actual costs through the first phase. So, back in April of 22, after that approval, we had went ahead and ordered what materials we'd asked for and paid for training. We did have a, a reduction in cost there. The biggest thing was due to, when we get that initial quote, we had planned for five teachers at each grade level. The cost of the primary grades, first and second grade is more than your intermediate grades because of the GOs text, which is added cost. So, since we had only three second grade teachers piloting and seven third grade, it's a good statement there, which was helpful for our second phase. After getting feedback from our third grade teachers, Wit and Wisdom has their prescribed ratio of texts to have available for students. Witten Wisdom has their prescribed ratio of texts to have available for students, and our teachers at third grade have worked very diligently and coordinated great efforts to share text so that each student had them. But listening to their feedback to go into the third module of our extended pilot, they may have known that in order for this to be successful, each student would need to have their own copy of it. So we looked to purchase the expanded version, and so future costs are based on making sure that we have the expanded text sets at the third grade level. So what we'd be looking for approval then in April by means of SRR funds exclusively would be the breakdown here. And again, in that second column, you see what was the estimated cost in March of 22 with updated costs here based on our updated plan and how we would again account for those students, consumable materials moving forward. And then we still have at the bottom there, based on proportionate share of how many, how much of the SRR funds are being leveraged at each grade level, including that same proportionate amount for early childhood, because we do have an early childhood coordination committee, but this committee has been working throughout the school year to make sure that we are providing age and developmentally appropriate children for our youngest learners in the district. So it's making sure we have that in place as well, that we are still going with that effort at this time. And then just for full transparency, what we would be looking for in anticipated costs next school year about this time would be the renewal of the literacy coach position for school year 2025. And that would need to be funded through district funds, not only because SRR three funds would be expended in other regards beyond just this, but all SRR three funds have to be expended and reimbursed by September of 2024. So we wouldn't be able to fund that salary through this D25 school. Questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Abby.
Thank you, Ms. Ohauer. Ma'am, I, Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. I want to say that first of all, we all know that there's been a few books in the Witten Wisdom series, and I appreciate you being upfront and transparent with that. But I also really want to thank the teachers that took the time to make that a consideration and look at the books that they felt were not age appropriate. And, you know, anytime you adopt a new series, there are things that you often want to alter or substitute. There may not be everything in that series that you want to use, but I do appreciate them taking the time to pull those books, and I know they'll be spending extra time finding materials that are more age appropriate. So I appreciate that transparency, and Matt, I appreciate you and your team working on this and letting the board know upfront. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
I just have one question. Dr. Durman, if I understand this right, some of this for the three years was really kind of two years, is well over a million dollars for the entire various phases, correct, Matt?
Correct. So I'm looking at, again, an estimation, project end total of about $770,000.
Yeah, which is a lot of money. Now, three quarters of that are coming from SRR funds and Title II funds. But I'm taking it that this is our best, most optimal means of using those funds as opposed to what other options are for those dollars. We've looked into that, and that's what the consensus is.
That is correct.
For our administration.
Yeah, that was done previously when we received the SRR funds a couple of years ago. We prioritize those items.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Lightman, I apologize. After we recognized you, I should have given you the opportunity to step out. So I appreciate your attention to this, but if you would like to step out now, it's a good time to go. So that is up to you, but now would be a good time if you ladies would like to leave.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you were, if any additional questions.
No, I was going to say something, and I didn't want to interrupt.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Disrespectful.
Okay. Information regarding the upcoming summer projects for year 24 is included in the fourth packet. Are there any questions? And Dunlap feasibility committee reports included in the fourth packet. Are there any questions?
I'll just make a comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Feldman. The group met last month prior to the special meeting and had conversation, and Mr. Feldman's been chairing that committee, so I will turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I know that Miranda has a couple of slides that maybe she can help me pull up that I provided. So really, this started as a sort of a request by a couple of coaches that asked me to look into some safety concerns back in the fall of '21 regarding the varsity baseball field. And then based on the fact that, and I'm no expert, I might ask one of the coaches to speak to this, but there are issues with the fact that our varsity field has to be used for both the middle school and the high school, and the bases are different. And so because it's natural turf, natural grass, rather, the ball has a tendency to go different ways. It's not optimal. And so we had some issues with the middle school basically tearing up the infield of the varsity field throughout the fall, and then the varsity grounds crew, et cetera, having to redo the field for the spring, and it never got into proper playing shape. And so that conversation, and again, this has been going on for a year and a half, these talks. The committee has only been meeting the last four or five months, maybe, but the conversations have been going on much longer than that. And then the DAC quickly came to the fore in terms of discussing the replacement of the DAC and what are we doing with the DAC? Why are we still in the DAC? Because as I had mentioned, either at, I'd have to go back and look, but it was the October or November meeting, I stated at this meeting that the DAC was dangerous, having coached there myself, some rec teams. Back in the day, it was dangerous 10 years ago. I'm sure it's even more perilous now. So we started talking about that as well. And then, you know, we were still in the midst of COVID. I'm not going to pick on Katie here, but she made some life choices and decisions. And so that put off a little bit of some of the things going on with the new AD coming, recruiting that, had to push some things. And then we got into a strategic planning process, which we are now immersed in. One meeting down, three to go. Dr. Durman had asked for, you know, me to give way and allow some patience for that process to continue. And so I think I've allowed for that, and I've provided patience for that as well. In the meanwhile, I've been working with the committee and with Mike McKenzie and other people to identify some funds that we can use to put in place two turf fields down at the valley. And there's a map up there on the screen that that's not exactly where those fields would possibly go. I mean, there's still a little bit of coordination and collaboration that we have to do with some other sports, like cross-country and track and some other things. I had some emails with Coach Friedman today, had an opportunity to speak to him in person before this meeting, but that's pretty close to what we're thinking about. But we do want to get their input on that. And if we were to be able to put those fields there, then first of all, it would not be in conflict with anything that's going to come out of the greater strategic planning process that the board is engaged in right now. And that's key, and that's number one. So it will only complement, and it will not be in conflict. It will also assist in the availability and the access issues that we have with the DAC and also help with the safety issues, not only associated with the DAC, but also the current, the current varsity field. And so how we fund that, and while that map's on the screen there, I want to point out the north side, yes. My son's outside. He's very confused as to what he should be doing. On the very southwest portion of the map, that's where my son hit a deer last Wednesday night. I want to point that out to everyone. So everyone was safe, but the Tahoe is not. I just want to mention that. There's John that just walked in. Thanks for coming, John. But anyway, so those are where the two fields would go approximately. We're not talking about ripping up the current fields right now. There are designs or thoughts about what do we do for facilities long term. Now, facilities long term, and that's part of the strategic planning process, not only involve, although we've only been talking about the athletic facility piece, they involve the educational facility piece. And that's very top of mind for me personally and for the committee. And they know that one cannot supersede the other, and one cannot conflict with the other. And so that's not the plan at all. And so we're trying to do this in concert with whatever we're doing athletically. We want to keep in mind that we are, I mean, even the kids that play, they are student athletes, student first. So we want to make sure that the academics are in front of or in concert with whatever we're doing athletically. So there's a lot of conversations on the table about Dunlap grade, wilder weight, what are we doing down the road, where are the enrollment figures, how is this going to play out? None of, all of this is going to come together in a way that it does not, it does not take away from knowing that that is the priority. But I want to keep the train moving and get something done in the meanwhile. And so I've passed around a sheet to the board, so they had it in front of them, but Miranda can put it up on the screen because I did send it out. We tried to make the font as small as possible, so none of you can see it in the audience, but I'll just speak to it. I mean, at the end of the day, and these are not hard quotes, we're still working through, this is a work in progress, but we'd like to get this moving forward. And basically, it's around $3 million, which is not a small number. I'll acknowledge that. That would be for two turf fields down on or about the valley property, again, after some coordination with some of the other sports. And they would get used all the time. This has been the best winter on record ever for this area, and it's certainly been the best winter I've ever witnessed in the last couple of weeks. I mean, the kids could have been on these fields the whole time. That would allow the kids to be out of the DAC. That would have allowed other programs to be in the DAC, using those fields, and we'd be able to do it. So, you know, how do we pay for it? So I've been talking to Mike McKenzie about this and the other committee members. We are sitting on approximately $3.5, $3.6 million in a working cash fund, which we don't use. We have no plans to use it. And at some point, it's going to, here in the near term, it's going to be almost $4 million, and we haven't tapped into that fund since 2016. So, I mean, seven years ago. I wasn't even in the district seven years ago. So it's money that's there, it's money we can use, we have a purpose, we have no plan to use that other money. When we get into other projects, schools, what we want to do in terms of upgrades, it's going to be a lot more than that. And I mean, that'll, that'll be things that we'll have to get the public involved in, and that will require a whole lot more money. And then we'll be able to maybe do these, these fields the way, maybe we'll be able to add to some of that, maybe we'll be able to really, I proposed a DAC replacement idea. Everyone on the committee hated it. I mean, they want to do it the right way and take more time and take up more money. I wanted to do it maybe the cheaper, quicker way, but I do think that this helps, this will help a whole lot more than just, I mean, people think this is like a baseball conversation. It's not. It's about the future of athletics, but it's also the future of academics, and it's the future of, you know, what this board, these people up here, and what the next row of people, based on the next few weeks, is also going to be looking at. So I'll be coming back in April with really a plan of asking for, you know, a number not to exceed sort of situation, and then take a run at trying to get some of the problems that we know have been issued for a long time, especially with regards to access and safety, that I want to get addressed. And again, I'll just fall back to, we have the funds, we're not using the funds, we have no plans to use the funds, and we have identified an opportunity to put it to good use and get off the dime on this. And I'm going to be coming back with, with looking for action at the next meeting. So I'm happy to answer questions about the process or where we've gotten, how we've gotten to here so far.
Are there any questions?
I just have one statement that I'd like to make for all of you sitting here or listening in the audience. As an attorney, I have to make a point. I'm not sure that everybody, I think most of us are fairly confident that the DAC is not dangerous. You can feel free to send your kids there and they're not going to be in harm's way. Just want to get that on the record, that we don't envision that there's a danger to our students or our kids going to the DAC.
And Mike, can I add, can I add to that statement? I was going to say the same thing. Dr. Durman, didn't we, after, you know, two months back, have an inspection on the DAC to ensure that it was safe for the students to be in?
Well, we're required to by school code to have that done every year.
Correct. Correct. So I wanted, I was going to make that same statement. Thank you. Mr. Wester. Did you have additional?
No.
You know, it's not an environmental issue that I'm talking about. I'm sure if anyone, you know, cracked the wall or cracked the ceiling, you'd have a problem. It's not an environmental issue. It's a practical, it's more a matter of, you know, practicality in terms of what sports should be in there using it. I know for, I know as an example, we had an issue last week, one of the coaches can attest to that, where, I mean, there are some sports that can be, I mean, you can kick a soccer ball in the DAC and you'll be okay, but if a soccer ball in the DAC and you'll be okay, but if you miss a, if a ball's coming in hot, baseball, and goes by you, you better not turn around to look for it, because if you do, you're going to have a problem. And so I'm just saying, I've coached, and let's be clear, I don't even like baseball. Okay? So I'll put that out, and anyone that knows me knows that. But I coached it at the rec level for five years. No one else would step up, whatever. Dawson was on one of my teams once for a few. He's a good player. Wish he was still playing. Anyway, it is not conducive to everything that we have in there. So I had my kids there, I coached there. Yeah, when I say it's dangerous, I probably should walk that back a little because I still, my kid was there tonight playing. So obviously, I don't think his, you know, he's going to get injured. So there, if that makes the attorney feel better, great, thank you. So I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, it is not conducive to throwing a, you know, at this level, fastballs at, you know, maybe 70, 75 mile an hour, and then turning around and trying to catch that ball. I mean, you're going to find yourself in a world of hurt. And there are other ways that, you know, to get around that, and, you know, these kids don't care about cold. I mean, they, so they'll play in the cold. And again, this winter, I know, bit of an aberration, but we could have been playing on these fields the last couple of weeks and freed up room in the DAC. Again, we have the money. I think it's an opportunity to move the district forward and move it in a direction that some of our, some other schools in the middle line are actively proceeding with. This is not like, hey, we just came up with this great idea. Every school in the conference is heading down this direction. And every smaller school who, you know, it's literally the only game in town, you know, what to do on a Friday night, they're already down this path, but we want to take this on too. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'm hoping that Coach Stone, right on time, walks in, just make a quick comment about safety and access for me, and then you can leave.
Yeah, sorry. I just want to breath. I don't run that long a lot. I just finished up, so.
Why don't you step up to the microphone, Coach, and identify yourself?
Yep. Eric Stone, Dunlap varsity baseball coach.
Just talk loud, Coach. It'll pick up.
So one of the challenges that we face, you know, within the varsity baseball program is kind of getting access, access to facilities, access to the DAC. There's all kinds of different teams that are trying to get in there to practice. Oftentimes, our underclass are either finding a gymnasium at one of the grade schools or parking lots sometimes, to be honest, when they're outside. And in the spring especially, we know how the weather is, and availability and ability to use our fields is a challenge at times. I think last year actually, at Dunlap Valley down there, we got to use the field about six times for the entire spring, just because of how wet it was and the conditions and practice-wise, a lot of times trying to get into the DAC and get things done there. And safety is a concern while we're in the DAC. We have, at the varsity level right now, we have 25 guys on our roster, and if you can imagine, if you walked in there, we have 25 guys playing catch. They're almost shoulder to shoulder, and we're running hitting drills, and we're constantly surveying and monitoring everybody to make sure there's enough space in between them, nobody gets hit with the bat, gets hit with the ball when they're throwing. So big concerns for us there. And just the field as well, we have a lot of safety concerns on our varsity baseball diamond. As you may or may not know, the junior high baseball team plays, Dunlap Middle plays on the diamond as well. And where their bases sit up, they have to run through the grass infield all the time the entire season, and so they're constantly running through the grass, and the maintenance is a real big difficulty there. We had a kid, a player last year, one of our own unfortunately, just a routine ground ball, went through the infield and it just kind of ping ponged through, hit him in the nose, broke his nose. We have guys taking infield, other teams dodging ground balls, and balls are just going through, beat up infield, beat up areas. So safety-wise, definitely is a concern, and we're doing the best we can with that.
Thank you, Coach.
Yep. Thank you.
Any additional questions coming from?
I had a question. You said that there was some potential conflicts with cross-country? What is the conflict?
Well, just that, I mean, if you put that other slide back up real quick, Miranda. So, I mean, the start, well, where the cross-country folks run through right now is...
Like behind the tennis courts? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's right where...
Down below?
No, it's right where the, I mean, I grew up there at Point, but I wouldn't be any closer than I am right now, right? Because I'm not that tall. And my idea of a laser pointer doesn't work.
I'll stay there, Tom.
Because I'm told that a laser pointer doesn't work on a TV screen.
So the survey missions in this area here, they take one lap around, and then they go that direction?
Yeah.
Back up through the wooded area?
Right.
And then when they finish, they come back along the outside fence of the softball field and finish right in here. So it would take some reconfiguring of some of the space that's down there. I also don't know for sure if this were to go, once you got a project manager in place, if they would say, put it here. They may have different ideas, maybe to the north of the current ones. We don't know until somebody who's an engineer and surveyor would know exactly the location. But it does, if you look on the Google map, it's a little bit more clear. You can see the actual path on the Google map.
So we, so basically, I mean, and we've gotten a lot of, and I appreciate Steve Dietz, who's provided this work to date gratis. We haven't contracted with anyone, we haven't hired anyone, we haven't paid for anything. So, I mean, this is just preliminary, and we threw it out there, but I've been directly engaged with today actively with emails and a personal conversation with the cross-country folks. We view this in concert with whatever comes out of the larger district strategic planning process to be a win for everyone, not just, this is not, again, I said it earlier, this is not a baseball conversation. This is a total athletic conversation, and we're going to marry it up with and not be in conflict or be competing for dollars with the larger strategic plan for the school issues either. But we are going to have more deliberate conversations with the cross-country folks, the track folks, make sure that this is a win for everyone. But I think there's a lot of upside to it, and I'm really excited about us being able to do something tangible and not just doing something because, you know, a lot of times, and, you know, I'm not going to, you know, apologize or make excuses, but a lot of times this board has to react, and we have to fix things that are broke. And this is fixing something that is broke, but we're not reacting entirely. We're doing something that's a little proactive too. And I think it's exciting being up here, you know, having to consistently react to things, to be in a proactive stance. And I believe that that's what this is, and that's why I'm supporting it and chairing the committee and planning to bring it back next month.
You'd mentioned track. How does that conflict with track?
You know, I think of track and cross-country as the same thing. I don't, I'm using them interchangeably. John ran track, he ran cross-country. I don't separate one from the other. And the coach, Friedman, I believe him to be the, he's the cross-country guy, and he's the head varsity track coach. So maybe that's where I'm bringing those two together. But that's the, yes, this has nothing to do with track.
The track is on the track.
Yeah, no, it's Friedman that's, you know, he's the same guy for the both, and that's what's, that's why I'm confusing my sports there, and I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman.
Okay.
I just wanted to make one quick comment to the board. As I got my mail late today, we all got this journal probably, and this is, as we're talking about strategic planning and facilities, a lot of information in here about sustainability, you got it right there, facilities, so it's probably really good timing, what's in here. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Great.
So we'll go ahead and move on. This concludes the information discussion items segment of the meeting. The board will now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussions regarding the items on the consent agenda? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Humbles. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagenbach. The board, any discussion? Roll call vote. Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Feldman? The board will now move on to the action items. The bill list, treasurer's report, district investment report, and bank statements are included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
I move to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $7,222,722 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Wagenbach?
Yes, aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the recommended board policy updates is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the board policy updates? Anne, did you?
Sure.
Since you do have a board packet.
Okay. I move to approve the board policy updates as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Humbles, Mr. Wisdom. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
I just want to say thank you to all the people that were involved with this. Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the staffing request for the 2023-24 school year is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the staffing request for the 2023-24 school year?
I'll move to approve the staffing request for the 2023-24 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Mrs. Henry.
That's whoever.
Okay, either one. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the 2023-2024 student handbooks is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the 2023-24 student handbooks?
I move to approve the 23-24 student handbooks as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Humbles. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the Chromebook refresh proposal is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the proposal?
I'll move to approve the Chromebook refresh proposal as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, both of you. Any discussion?
Clear.
Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois State Police is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the agreement?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois State Police as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausenke. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagenbach. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the administrator contracts is included in the board packet. Could I have a motion to approve the administrator contracts?
I'll move to approve the administrator contracts as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Humbles. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hausenke?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Motion carried. This concludes the action items portion of the meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn the closed session?
I'll move to adjourn the closed session for the following purposes as stated in the Open Meetings Act, employment compensation and performance of specific employees, student disallowations, discussions of meetings lostfully closed, collective negotiating, security, purchase of lease or real property and litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Wagenbach. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Humbles. I just didn't know whose phone I should call so I can attend closed session.
You could call mine.
Okay, I'll do it. Thank you.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm of 707. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Dr. H...
I do like these chairs.
Yeah, mine are really good. I like them.
The candidates are, or they can get fined. You know that.
Henry there?
Yeah, she's there.
You got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to return to open session?
Some of them.
Return to open session.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Could I have a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda?
She's got it, Mike.
I'll make that motion to approve the human resources consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Any discussion? Rule call, oh please. Feldman?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Housinggate?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humblez?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
How should adjourn?
Mrs. Henry and Mrs. Humblez, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, eight o'clock. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
We'll do the same next job.
Good night, Teresa.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
This is blonde one.
Oh shoot, is this mine?
I think so, 'cause I never opened it. You're drinking it.
He brought it in special from somewhere fancy.